Call to order the January twenty sixth, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Slane County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner?
Hello? Uh, is Mr. Wees there?
Commissioner White?
Here.
Yeah, Mr. Wees, this is Stuart Hartwick. I was informed to call you today. I guess we're doing a Zoom by phone, but...
Yeah, Mr. Hartwick, tell me you need to mute your phone.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, could everyone please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. If everyone can make sure all the microphones and phones and other electronic devices are muted when you're not speaking, so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now, Brad, our IT director, could construct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting? Brad?
Good morning. If you're running the Zoom client and you have, uh, audio and video capability, at the bottom of the Zoom window, you will notice the Participants tab. If you select that and then look in the very right-hand corner of the screen, you will see a raise hand function, and that will let the host know that you would like to speak in the meeting. If you are dialed in, only dialed into the meeting, if you input star nine on your key, on your phone keypad, that will raise your hand. And if you dial star six, that will unmute your microphone.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. At this time, we will move on into our citizens input portion of the meeting, where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who want to address the commission at this time?
Yes, sir, I would like to.
Okay, please state your name and your address.
My name is Stuart Hartwick. I live at sixty-three ninety-three South Mir Road, Smolins, Kansas, area code six-seven-four-five-six.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm calling in regards to the permit fee for the septic tank. Uh, I call and then they want three hundred dollars. My septic tank right now is forty years old. I have no problems with my septic system at all. I talked to one of your licensed, uh, plumbers, and he said forty years is enough. It should be coming out, so I'm taking it out. And while I was taking it out, I've learned that there is a three hundred dollar permit. I went through this forty years ago with Warren Griffiths, and I paid the permit fees and everything then, did the PERC tests and all this and passed everything. And all I'm wanting to do is just dig up a septic tank that's a thousand gallon and even put back a bigger one that beats your code even better for fifteen hundred gallon. And like I say, you're charging a three hundred dollar fee. I've called around to four counties. I called Dickerson County. They charge a hundred and fifty dollars for this permit, and there's no reopen fee. I called the Person County. They charge a hundred dollars for this permit and no reopen fee. I called Ottawa, and I called Dick, uh, Ellsworth, and they stood informed me that Slane County does all their work for them, that they don't have enough to keep a crew busy. But in the meantime, I have a licensed plumber out here, and that you have Seth or Sean there, which I have not heard nothing bad about either one of them. Everybody talks highly of them, that they have to come out and do an inspection. I have a licensed plumber that's on your list doing this. Why do I need them out here if these plumbers are licensed to do this? And they've passed your tests and everything, you know, and I just feel that three hundred dollars for this amount of work and just to reopen a tank, put a new one in and close it back up is extremely too high. I am willing to pay a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars like the other counties are charging. But I think three hundred dollars for this year, three hundred dollars on a new existing, like a new home, I could see three hundred dollars there for a new septic tank and lateral fill. But not when we're reopening one and someone's trying to live to the code that you guys have set forth. That's really about all I've got to say. I just think three hundred dollars is way too high for reopening and trying to live up to your expectations.
Okay. All right.
Well, we'll- Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Vidrickson, if I might. Uh, this is not the first time that I've heard this complaint, and I really don't have an answer for people when they, when they ask this of me. I think that we should instruct our, our people to look into this. I'm sure this was set some time ago before any of us were commissioners. I think we need to look into this a little bit and find out, uh, how it got to be three hundred dollars and what that entails, and see if we can help the citizens out in that regard, because I, I don't have an answer either. So, but I think we need to ask planning and zoning or the people that are in charge as to why this fee is, is set at the level that it is. So, thank you.
Okay.
I thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wees here. Uh, I agree with Commissioner Vidrickson. I would like to see this, uh, come up on a, a study session here shortly. Uh, I would also like to know the number of new permits that we've done the past four years, year by year, and also the, the number of, uh, repairs, replacements that have been done during that time period. What kind of impact this really has.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree. I think we can get with planning and zoning and get that set up. Okay. Any other comments? Well, thank you for your call.
I thank you, gentlemen, for your time, and have a good day.
You betcha. Thank you. Stay safe. At this time, is there any other comments? Any other hands up, Brad?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, at this time, we will move on to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of the prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Bob Vidrickson, and I do have an amendment that I would like to make to the minutes. However, uh, I think it would be, uh, time would be better served, uh, if I, if we were just to pull the minutes this time and let me, uh, be able to get with, uh, our clerk and, uh, amend the minutes, uh, as we see fit in that situation. So I guess just, uh, I would like to pull the minutes from this, from this, uh, agenda.
Okay, I, I don't see any reason. Is that, is there a consensus on that? Does anybody see any reason not to? Okay, seeing no objection, I think we can pull the minutes and see what's, what the issue is here. So, okay. Mr. Vidrickson, hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved.
Well, I, I think, Roger, this is Commissioner Vidrickson again, so the consent agenda is, is not approved. We are, we're pulling the minutes from that agenda.
And...
So the consent agenda would be approved with the minutes withdrawn.
Okay, okay, and then I guess that's where, when I stated that, I guess, I, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, since you made that deal, that's why I meant is that we would, we would approve it as your statement is that we'll pull the, the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Item one.
Letter of Appointment to Cambria Township with Jamie Doss County Clerk.
Yes.
Yes, um, Commission, um, I am looking to appoint, and actually, the next three items are, are for me. The first one is for Cambria Township. Um, the Board of County Commissioners appoint, uh, members to those boards in the event of a vacancy. Um, the person that was elected, uh, on the November third election had until January eleventh, when the term of office begins to move into that district. Um, they did not reside in the district as of that day, so, um, we, um, looked for someone to fill that vacancy. Um, Ann McCall, um, has, uh, offered to take that position for the next four years, so I'm seeking appointment by the commission for that.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Uh, again, Bob Vidrickson and, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, part of Cambria Township is in, uh, my district and, and part of it is in, in District One, Commissioner Shadwick. And, uh, I know, um, Ann McCall, and I actually solicited her to apply for this position, and she's the former owner of, uh, McCall Manor and is, uh, very adept at being able to handle the, the position of treasurer and, and, uh, would be a good appointment to the, to the board, uh, for that township.
Okay, any other commissioners? Comments? Okay, seeing that, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, um, Bob Vidrickson, I move we appoint Ann McCall as treasurer on the board for Cambria Township.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Ann McCall as treasurer on the board of Cambria Township. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Item two.
Letter of Appointment for, to Township, uh, Pleasant Valley Township Treasurer with Jamie Doss County Clerk. Um, again, Commission, um, the person elected, uh, to this position on November third actually already, uh, was on the board and chose to remain in their current position. So therefore, um, this opened up a vacancy for the, for the treasurer, and we have, um, Nikki Davenport that is willing to serve in that position.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? Any members of the public wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, nobody has their hand raised at this time.
Thank you. I will bring back to the commissioners for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint Nikki Davenport as clerk on the board for Pleasant Valley Township.
Commissioner Vidrickson and I second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Nikki Davenport as clerk on the board of Pleasant Valley Township. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yep.
Ju- just to clarify from the county clerk, is this for clerk or treasurer?
Yes, I was getting ready to step in. This is actually for treasurer.
Oh, okay, I apologize. It says, okay, thank you.
I will, I will amend my motion to, uh, note that it's treasurer instead of clerk as it's written on the...
Yes.
Item.
Thank you.
And I will, Mr. Vidrickson, I will second the amendment.
Okay. And it's been seconded with, with the amendment of the treasurer instead of the clerk? And are there any further comments? I will now call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero. We'll move to item number three.
Item number three is Letter to, of Appointment to Walnut Township. Um, this is, um, the same situation that happened in the last township is the person that was elected is already on the board. Um, so we, uh, looked for someone to complete this, uh, term of office, and Larry Hemphill has offered to be on the board.
Okay, and before we get started on this, Jamie, is this for a clerk or a treasurer?
Um, let me double check that, because it says clerk.
Yes, well, that was like last time, so that's the reason why I wanted to ask that. Should, okay, we need to wait on you to find that out, don't we?
Yes, just a second, I'm sorry.
Okay, not a problem.
Because I thought this person was to fulfill the treasurer position, because those are the two that were up. Um... Uh, here we go. Yes, that actually is for, um... No, that actually is for the, um... Yeah, that is actually for the treasurer position. That letter was incorrect. I think it was just copied.
Okay.
My mistake.
Okay. Okay, I am, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Brad. I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint Larry Hemphill as clerk on, or treasurer on the board for Walnut Township.
Commissioner Wees has seconded the motion.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Larry Hemphill as treasurer on the board of Walnut Township. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Item four.
RFA one-one-three dash two-one, Disposal of Property with Rosie Walter, Department of Senior Services Director.
Hello, Rosie.
Hello. Um, Senior Services requesting for our sixty-five inch Samsung TV be declared of no value so it can be disposed of. The TV no longer works and cannot be repaired. The alternatives are declare item of no value to be disposed, disposed of, or don't declare the item of no value and it will be stored. Um, staff recommendation is to clear the item of no value and authorize the item to be disposed of. County Policy forty dot four-five provides for three methods of disposal of property, donation, destruction, and sell, and the budget impact is none.
Okay, that'll work. Okay, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Commissioner Wees here.
Yes.
Is this the TV that had been donated, uh, two, three years ago?
It is not that TV. I actually, um, put that TV up in the library room. So this is a TV, different TV that we have purchased for downstairs.
Thank you.
And Rosie, how long ago was this purchased?
Approximately two years ago on the inventory report. They just don't make them like they used to. Half of the TV went black. So you could watch half of the TV.
And you have had it checked out, that it's not repairable? I mean, there's, there's no issues with it?
No, it just, it just won't turn, turn on. I mean, it, half of it'll turn on. That's just it.
Okay. All right. Okay, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, nobody has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, I will bring, bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Vidrickson, I move we declare the Samsung TV of no value and authorize it to be disposed of.
Commissioner Wees has seconded the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we, uh, declare the Samsung TV of no value and authorize it to be disposed of. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Item five.
RFA one-one-four dash two-one, City of Salina, CDBG, CV Grant with Rosie Walter, Department of Senior Services Director.
Well, good morning, Rosie. This is your day.
Good morning. Um, Senior Services requesting the commission approval to accept a grant in the amount of thirty-five thousand from the City of Salina, the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus for the meal program funds for local ag- agencies affected by the coronavirus. And the grant application originally that we submitted was for ten thousand dollars, but Senior Services was the only applicant, so we were contacted by the city if we wanted the thirty-five thousand. Of course, we said yes, so we submitted additional paperwork for that, and we have been awarded that thirty-five thousand. So I am seeking commission approval to accept that. The alternatives for action are deny request or accept funding. Staff recommendation is to accept the thirty-five thousand to offset the cost of the Meals on Wheels program, which has increased greatly due to the pandemic. More people, more seniors are staying home. And the budget impact is the twenty-twenty budget will be reimbursed thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Well, that sounds like a good deal there. Okay, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Yes, money?
Just ready to make motion.
Okay, any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize Senior Services to accept the grant funding as presented.
Commissioner Wees has seconded the motion.
Okay, are there any further comments? It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, approve, authorize the Senior Services to accept, uh, grant functions as presented. RFA number one-one-four dash twenty-one, City of Salina, CDBG dash CV Grant. Are there any further comments? I will now call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Well, good luck, Rosie. Hope it goes a long ways.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, next we will move into informational items.
Item number one is Department of Senior Services update with Rosie Walter, uh, Department of Senior Services Director.
Hello, Rosie, take it over.
Hello. Okay, um, the reporting period is October through December, and I have included some year-end, um, stats. Accomplishments, Christmas gifts for seniors. We did a gift package for all of our Meals on Wheels recipients. They received blankets, food, candy, personal hygiene item, items, homemade cards and placemats and puzzles, all for Christmas. Um, donations came from Schwann's Employees, Girl Scouts, the Masons, Salina Arts and Humanities, and teachers and students of South Middle School. Volunteers and staff put together all the packages and they were delivered. And City of Salina, the CBD CV Grant, which you just awarded for thirty-five thousand for meal reimbursement due to the increase to food for Meals on Wheels. And then our fundraiser that we submitted back in November, um, just requesting funds to support Meals on Wheels in agency, we received a total of forty-one thousand six hundred and nine from that fundraiser, which is eight thousand five hundred nineteen above what we did last year. Plans, um, we're currently working with the Advisory Council to put together our wish list, and then we will get busy writing grants, which we will inform the commission of. Um, Meals on Wheels for Pets and Animal Care, uh, we've met with the staff for Friends of the Animal Shelter, and we've received approximately twelve different applications, so we're going to work on a grant together and get moving on that. Um, volunteer needs, it's an ever-growing thing with us because our population is up for Meals on Wheels. We have approximately eighteen different routes, and it's because of the population that we do serve, a lot of our volunteers also are seniors, but we do need more volunteers, so I would request if anybody is interested in becoming a Meals on Wheels volunteer or even a substitute, that they get a hold of Senior Services. We're getting ready to plan on another distribution of food items for our seniors to help them make it through the rest of the winter months. Um, Emergency A- Food Bank donated, um, approximately three hundred pieces or boxes of candy that we'll include in that. The budget update, um, the revenue for the year were up one thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-one cents over last year. Which is kind of shocking with the COVID, but, um, our numbers with Meals on Wheels has dramatically increased. Expenses by the year January through December, we are, we have expended eighteen thousand eight thirty-seven and seventy-four over what we expended last year, which, I mean, increased costs of meals for sure, but also we had a lot of different repairs and equipment that we did purchase for the kitchen. The average daily population from January through December is up by twenty-nine. And the number of meals served within twenty-two, twenty is seventy-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-five. When we compared that to the cost of the meals, we figured that our cost per meal is four dollars and fifty-six cents, which is, we charge five dollars for, um, the public to come in, in the general public. Now, if they do subsidize, um, it's three dollars and fifty cents for the congregate or in-house meals and three seventy-five for Meals on Wheels. Um, other items that I didn't include are taxes for seniors, um, that are free. Vida, N A A R P are gearing up starting February one, and if anybody is interested in finding more about that, they can contact me here at the Senior Center. Um, the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging, they completed an audit of our facility. As you know, they do all of our subsidy, subsidized funding. Um, we had no findings and we received an excellent score. Um, heaters and blankets. I just wanted to remind the public that we do have a stockpile of heaters that have been donated to the center and a lot of blankets still from the Masons. So if anybody is in need of a heater or a blanket, they can contact us. And then, um, last I would say that we're currently working with the Health Department for the COVID shots, the vaccinations. So, um, if any senior wants the vaccination, vaccinations are available again, if they want to contact us, we will help them get signed up for those. Even over the phone.
Okay. All right, any comment? Thank you, Rosie. Very good. And, uh, any comments from the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Vidrickson. Uh, Rosie, you mentioned that five dollars was the cost of serving a meal in the, in the, uh, at, at our facility.
Right, in the dining room, yes.
Okay, and what about delivery of, of, uh, the Meals on Wheels? Is the cost the same?
No, well, yes, it is. I mean, the cost is the same for if they're regular pay. Now, if that person is on a subsidized program, it's three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Right. I, I hate to even mention it, but, um, I mean, even if we were to increase our prices slightly, I mean, to save five dollars and fifty cents instead of five dollars, I mean, that, that's going to increase your, your intake by about, if, if we have seventy-eight thousand people, I'm just doing rough math, math, uh, half a dollar would be another thirty-five thousand dollars on the bottom end or the top end for the budget, however you want to look at it. So, uh, I, I hate to even mention a price increase, uh, for your facility, but I think eventually we're going to have to look at something like that, so...
Well, subsidized is, I mean, we don't receive, definitely don't receive as much funding for that. And most of our meals typically now especially, because the dining room population is so much lower, I mean, we are not, um, receiving as much funding in the dining room. Most of it is going out.
And that's my point. I mean, we're only getting, even, even in the dining room, if it were full every day... And that's my point. I mean, we're only getting, even, even in the dining room, if it were full every day, we're only making a profit of forty-four cents, and that's a, that's not a net profit, that's a gross profit. So that's, that's, uh, tough to survive on that, and, uh, I mean, I'm all for helping the Meals on Wheels, but somewhere along the line, we may have to, you know, look at that a little bit and, and research it.
Well, and I think grants are always an opportunity to, to offset some of those costs. Like the thirty-five thousand we just received.
Okay, any other comments?
Commissioner Wees here. Rosie, I got a few questions. In your, uh, in your figures that you, uh, provided us, uh, was the thirty-five thousand dollars, um, and the forty-one thousand six hundred and nine, were both of those included in the twenty twenty, uh, revenue?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I can't quite hear yet.
I'm sorry, um, uh, you mentioned the thirty-five thousand dollar grant that you just approved. And you also mentioned the forty-one thousand six hundred and nine dollars that you received in donations.
Right.
We got mail out.
Mm-hmm.
Are, are both of those figures in your twenty twenty revenue numbers that you gave us?
Yes. Oh, no, I'm sorry. The thirty-five thousand I haven't even received yet. I will, I should receive it in a couple of weeks. The grant funds, um, are in my budget, but they're in the donation account, so you're not seeing those within this.
And one other thing, while I got the mic, you, you mentioned the need for volunteers. Uh, could I suggest that maybe you get on, uh, on the local radio, uh, morning shows and, and make your plea and maybe let the, let the public hear that again, and it might generate some interest.
Yep, I was on the radio, um, two weeks ago, but yeah, I'm definitely for that, too. Day four, one of our volunteers actually is one of the speakers at Eagle Radio, so that's a good fit for us. Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? Okay. Uh, at this time, we're county administrators update. Mr. Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. A few items to update the commission on today. First off, um, we are not quite done with coronavirus relief funding. You may recall that we expected to be done on December thirtieth, but then, uh, the Congress extended the deadline. Uh, and so we have two more reporting deadlines to the state of Kansas that have been announced, um, February tenth and March seventeenth. And we have a webinar that will take place, uh, on Thursday of this week to explain those new reports to us. So, um, I, I thought that project was going to be done by now, but it's, it's ongoing at this point. Uh, the second item is I just wanted to mention the budget in brief for twenty twenty-one. I distributed that to, uh, department heads and elected officials on Friday via email. Commissioners, you each have printed copies in your inbox, mailbox here at the office if you have not been in yet. Uh, if you need additional copies, please let me know. We also have that posted on the website. So hope that is, um, helpful for the public in understanding our twenty twenty-one budget. The third item is, uh, progress on the jail project. Our architect was in town yesterday and met with the City of Salina regarding zoning issues, reported to me last night that that meeting went very well. Um, it feels like we're definitely on track there. He also talked with the sheriff's office staff on interior layout issues. Uh, he, he will be back in town in February for another series of meetings. And then, uh, finally, since the legislature is in session, I wanted to follow up on a couple of items. Last week I mentioned to you Senate Bill thirteen, and there was a hearing scheduled, uh, on that for last week. Uh, because of the, um, events in Topeka last week, um, that hearing was actually delayed until this afternoon, so I do plan to listen in to that remotely. Uh, I know that Representative Sanders, who is on the House Tax Committee, has talked with our treasurer and appraiser about that bill. So I think, um, we're, we're definitely, um, working on that issue. The one bill that has passed both houses of the legislature and was signed by the governor last night is Senate Bill fourteen, and Senate Bill fourteen is important because that's the one that extends the disaster declaration for the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Uh, that was scheduled to expire today. Uh, actually, per the House bill that was passed last summer, uh, it is now extended to March thirty-first. And, uh, finally, I will mention a, uh, more of a local legislative update, I guess, we'll call it. Um, not, uh, the State House, but the City of Salina. Uh, I am aware that they are working on updating their housing needs inventory, and they will be doing a study session on that issue next Monday. So, um, keeping in contact with them on that issue because, uh, their choices do have the potential to affect, uh, the county, um, from a revenue standpoint. So, uh, monitoring that issue as well. Uh, that is what I had to report on this morning, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any comments?
I have a question, not related to anything that you went over, Phil, but, um, with, um, the signup, uh, filling up in thirty minutes, which is fine. I mean, that just is what it is. There's only nine hundred available. How do people know ahead of time when the signup is available?
Um, well, the Health Department will be announcing that, uh, as soon as new vaccine comes in. Right now, they anticipate about five hundred doses per week. That's not a guarantee, but that's what they're anticipating. So, um, we'll probably be having another signup, uh, each week if those, uh, doses do materialize as planned. So they will be announcing that, um, via social media and, um, on, you know, their, their website and that, um, uh, the signup website as well. So, uh, if folks have additional, um, questions or need assistance, I know Rosie mentioned that, uh, she's working with folks, and, um, we can certainly try and help folks as well.
Yeah, so somebody that doesn't have a computer, they can contact senior service, services, I assume, and have them help?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
I did notice, I looked up the demographics of Saline County the other day, and we have a little over ten thousand individuals in Saline County over sixty-five. So five hundred a week, I mean, that's four or five months. Isn't that, am I thinking right? I mean, that's, that's twenty weeks.
Yeah, so ten thousand is the number that, um, that the Health Department has been working with, and they have said that once they reach, um, thirty percent of that number, which, you know, probably not everybody will choose to get the vaccine, but once they get to thirty percent of that number, then they'll also be looking at opening up phase two to other populations, including the critical workers as well. So, um, yeah, the vaccine, um, the, you know, this, this is the central concern about vaccine is availability. Not just in, in Saline County, but of course statewide and nationwide. Um, we had more doses, we could get them in arms quicker.
All right, uh, this is Commissioner Vidrickson. I'd like to weigh in a little bit on what, what Monty's question was about and so forth, because I have talked briefly with our administrator about this because there are a good number of senior citizens who don't have a computer, don't have access to a computer, don't have access or the ability to pay for internet and so forth. And, and when social media or, or, uh, the internet is the only way that we can contact some of these people, that makes it pretty tough. Uh, somewhere along the line, we've got to figure out how to reach these people, uh, via some, some source or method, and I obviously don't have it. Uh, I, I'm fortunate enough to have a computer. I can afford an internet. And, uh, the Health Department has done a whale of a job, in my opinion, of getting the message out via their, but you have to be signed up for their, uh, their newsletter to be able to access that. Or, you know, you've got to be able to tell your next door neighbor that, hey, it's available now, whatever. But for us to reach the public, it's, it's difficult, and we've got to find some way. And I don't mean just Saline County Commission. I'm talking about, uh, nationally, uh, the, the, uh, the city commission, uh, the state legislature, uh, when, when we're starting to rely on everything electronically, uh, that leaves a good many of our people in the dark, and I'm, I'm sorry, but that's, you know, that's, that's a tough, we've got to figure it out somewhere. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Vidrickson. Anyone else have any comments? Any comments from the public? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay. Well, thank you, Phil, for an excellent update. Any commissioners' comments?
Yes, this is Commissioner Vidrickson. Uh, I do want to, uh, let everyone know that I did attend, uh, the virtual meeting of the Salina, Saline County Airport Authority, uh, last week, and, uh, it was a pretty lengthy meeting with a lot of things discussed, and I'll just give you a few of the highlights, uh, that people may or may not be aware of. And, and, you know, it starts at the top. President Biden has issued, uh, executive orders mandating masks on airport or on aircraft, and I wasn't aware that that hadn't been in place, and laying out testing and quarantine guidelines for international travel. Uh, the demand for, uh, January travel, at least at the Salina Airport, is up forty percent over where it was a year ago. And, uh, January and February capacity is down around half, and airlines are taking a wait-and-see approach for spring break in March and April to not make any large capacity moves as far as adding aircraft or pricing and that kind of thing. And the airport is, uh, very busy trying to fill some of their, their real estate, uh, buildings out there and, and getting people involved or talking to businesses to come to town and so on and so forth. So it's a busy place, and, uh, airport travel, air travel is on the upswing, uh, not only nationally and internationally, but, uh, in Salina and Saline County. So that's my update for the airport.
Thank you. And, uh, I have a comment that is last week when we had made, uh, some, uh, appointments for the, the Saline County Commissioners, and I want to reinstate that, uh, I will, Roger Sparks will stay on the Tri-Rivers Fair Board. And thank you, Mr. Vidrickson, for, uh, bringing it to my attention, and you will be on the building authority. And, uh, and I want to appreciate Bob because he, he commented to me about how a lot of times that, uh, the, the building authority ran so late, and it doesn't give the chair enough time to get from point A to be involved in getting this here set up to run that. So Bob, uh, wanted to go ahead and, and, uh, free me up, and, and I would stay on the fair board. So thank you, Commissioner Vidrickson. And, uh, so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, and we will just, uh, make a note of that. Uh, is there any other comments?
Commissioner Sparks?
Yes.
Um, this is Jamie. Um, I actually, um, in reviewing the motions that we made earlier, started questioning, um, if I had those correct. And actually, as they were written, those two positions, um, item number, uh, two and three, Pleasant Valley and Walnut, should have been for clerk. Um, I'm, I've worked with all the townships for so long, I recognize those names, so I wanted to double check, and they were already in the treasurer position. So those ones that were vacant were appointed to the clerk position. So I would request a motion just to amend those.
Okay. Can we have a motion to amend item number two and three back to the original clerk instead of a treasurer?
Commissioner Shadwick and so move.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is the second to, to that motion.
Okay, we have a, uh, motion and a second to, uh, amend the, from a treasurer to a clerk as original presented, and, uh, and at that time, uh, are there any other further comments? Okay, I'll take a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks, aye. Motion carries. Those, well, those will remain, I mean, go back to a clerk instead of a treasurer. Item two and three. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, for bringing that back to our attention. And, uh, any other comments? Okay, uh, this being will be adjourned. Thank you. I'll have a safe day.